Now come to order, roll call please.
Ms. Cardello?
Yeah.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Ms. Sarny?
Yeah.
Mr. Barrows?
Here.
Ms. Murray?
Here.
Ms. Lambert?
Here.
Mr. La Monica? Mr. Panarisi? Ms. Dapresay?
Yeah. Seven members present, we have a quorum. Uh, let's begin by, uh, swinging the flag.
Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
United States of America. And to the republic. For which stands one nation. Under God. Indisent with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everybody. This is a, uh, really a whole meeting to, um, discuss the, uh, school budget and, um, I will turn it over to Superintendent Teheliani.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, good evening. I, Lauren is going to, um, share her screen so that you can see the presentation. Alright, thank you. So everyone can see that?
Yes.
Great. Um, so, last week at our school committee meeting, we went over our initial budget reductions, um, at a very high level. Now that all of our staff have been notified tonight, we are able to go into, um, greater depth on our personnel reductions. While we have made reductions in several areas, um, or in all areas contractual services, stipends, maintenance, professional development, uh, materials. You know, we, we know our staff reductions are the ones where, that are going to be most significantly felt by our students and by our community. Um, so that is where we will be focusing our attention this evening. So next slide, please. So, um, you know, we are all hearing that there will be substantial cuts to our budget. Um, and this quote essentially sums up the sentiments of most districts. Uh, virtually every district is putting together some range of options, including their worst-case scenarios. Um, and some superintendents, in fact, us included, believe that they may not know what their budget is until August. So given what other districts are doing now, we are not the only ones the financial land next school year will look like. Next slide, please. So we wanted to talk about what are other districts in the Commonwealth doing to ameliorate the anticipated budget shortfall for next year? Um, you know, again, like us, they are making reductions to all of their different line items and that includes, um, staff and personnel. We put here, um, the teacher and staff cuts compared to the number of students in other respective districts, just that you could get an idea of where we land. Everett falls right within the average range for the percentage. However, what I do want to highlight is that of the 116 staff who have received layoff notices, 23 of those staff are guaranteed a position within the district. We are also, and I'll talk about this a little bit more later, we are also opening 15 parent family liaison positions to better support families via remote blended or in-person instruction and for the overall engagement. Um, this is part of one of the, this is one of the areas where we heard a lot of feedback from the community, um, when it came to the Student Opportunity Act. So while we do not have that money for this year, we felt that it still needed to inform our decisions moving forward. So when we were thinking about our overall staff, um, and where we were, you know, putting our efforts, uh, we decided that these would be positions that we would want to leverage for next year. Also, I do want to include that unassigned teachers do account for 34 of the staff reductions. Our unassigned teachers are those that are not assigned to classrooms, so they may be covering for classes, um, either on a daily basis or providing, you know, sub-coverage or maybe a long-term substitute in the case that we need that. Um, you know, these are staff reductions actually that the unassigned teachers that happen every year. Um, and I think that honestly, that is the best comparison to make is rather than making it with other districts is to make it to ourselves. Um, while this is a very tough budget year and we knew layoffs were coming, if we do compare this to last year's layoffs, we are actually, you know, have less. So we had, um, 189 full-time employees and seven part-time employees who received layoff notices last year. For a total of 196 employees. So I think, you know, again, our, our goal here was to make sure that we were protecting the direct instruction to our service, to our students, uh, making sure that they received their instructional support. And we wanted to, again, make sure that we were not, um, you know, not, not sort of allowing our, uh, our teachers, even if they were non-tenured, um, you know, to, to cut them if we knew we were going to have to ask them back and we knew that those were classes that were going to have students in them regardless. So we wanted to make sure that we protected that staff, that we didn't lose them to other districts during that time. So again, that is why we chose to, um, make our, our reductions in areas that were not direct services to students. So next slide, please. So as you may remember, um, part of the planning, again, as I mentioned, for the Student Opportunity Act, there were several focus groups in various locations and days and times. Um, and again, that was information that I looked at and that we were reviewing as a leadership team and as an overall team when I first, um, joined on March 1st. And I felt like that that was still very important information and needed to, when we are thinking about our overall budget and budget reductions as well as budget increases for next year, that that still needed to, um, inform our decisions. So, um, you know, there was overarching need for many groups was the increased level of support for parents and families. Um, also, I think that we definitely saw during this time that we need family liaisons, that the support to the families really has increased in its need, if anything. Um, and our, you know, our families really do it. You know, I know what it was like to, to be instructing my, um, my children at home, you know, and I'm a trained educator. So I think that what we say is that our families really need support and we want to make sure there are families, even those that, um, speak English as a second language, have the support that they need and the language that they need. So that regardless of what occurs next year, as far as whether remote, blended, or in-person, that, you know, we are providing that in-person, that engagement with our families. Next slide, please. So staff reductions were not only made at the school level, they were also made at the district level. So those 116 did also include our, um, you know, our overall staff reductions. Um, here is the previous organizational chart for central offices that reflects the organization as it was when I first began on March 1st. So when I spoke last week, we mentioned that part of our process for reductions was in identifying areas where there could be some improved efficiency and streamlining. So, um, this was our previous organizational chart and the next slide shows our current, um, organizational chart. So this new central office organizational chart eliminates some of the inefficiencies and also leverages some of the existing staff to create a more streamlined reporting process that we hope is clear to the greater school community. This chart also reflects six positions that were not included in the previous chart but have undergone no changes, such as the athletic director, music coordinator, art coordinator, et cetera, but who we wanted clearly delineated here, um, in order to demonstrate, you know, where they are within the organization, the reporting structure under which they fall. So as you can see, there have been a few reductions to our administrative staff. As given the current fiscal climate, we are going to work with, you know, less staff doing, you know, more clearly delineated, um, structures and, and roles. So for example, uh, in the finance office where we previously had four clerks and a finding, financial analyst, we now have a financial analyst, a budget and grants coordinator, each of whom will have an administrative assistant or clerk to support with the accounts payable and the other, um, the other financial clerical work. So again, we're trying to sort of consolidate some positions, really delineate those where we found that there were redundancies with people who are doing, um, you know, similar type positions. So to make it very clear who is doing what, this will also help us as we are creating job descriptions for everyone, just so that everybody is very clear on, um, what their roles are. You know, again, in a tough budget year, um, we, we can't afford redundancies. Everybody has to have a very specific role and they need to, to, um, that they fill. Next slide, please. Thank you. So I also want to talk about the, um, the schools as well. So I'm going to, uh, show sort of the organizational charts again as we've made them for, um, what did exist in, in all of our schools so that I can clearly delineate sort of where we have made reductions. So we're going to start with every high school that is probably the most, uh, complex. So here, you know, is the organizational chart. This does not include teachers, lead teachers, paraprofessionals and other school staff such as custodians. This is really just highlighting those staff where we know we have made some adjustments. So here you will see that there is a principal, a vice principal, an executive vice principal. We had a CTE, um, you know, director and there was a clerk under, actually that's missing, there's a administrative assistant under the CTE director. Um, there's also four administrative assistants in the front office. Here you will see that there are, um, five academy assistant principals as well as a guidance director that also has two admin assistants. So for next year, the changes that we have made are, we are making it so that it is a principal and a vice principal. Instead of having four administrative assistants in the front office, we will just go down to two. And we are also, um, going from an academy assistant principal model to a academy dean model. Uh, this is a model similar to what we have had in previous years. Right, so the next slide, um, shows the organization of the English Lafayette, Cavarian and the Whittier Schools. So here you'll see principal, assistant principal and administrative assistant. So this is very, um, you know, consistent across the board. And then we have a data coach, two math interventionists, two literacy interventionists and a guidance counselor. Now here I know that they're in, um, again, we, we have a great number of positions and all of them are incredibly, uh, crucial and make such a huge, you know, contribution to our students. However, we did need to scale down on, on some of these, um, positions. And so we did, uh, eliminate our data coaches. So our math interventionists and our literacy interventionists do work directly with students and we wanted to preserve that. But, um, for the data coaches, while we would love to have those and hope to have those again in the future, unfortunately for this upcoming year, that will be a position that will not exist at our schools. That being said, these are positions that, you know, these are very seasoned teachers and educators who will all be able to, you know, bounce back into another position. They are the 23 that I mentioned earlier that will be able to then be put into a position. They have rights to those positions where they will then be providing direct services to students. So again, you know, the entire, um, methodology around this was making sure that our staff and our funds are being funneled towards the students. So the next chart again shows, um, a similar, uh, for the Parlin. Whereas at that school, we actually had two coaches. So again, we had to make that, um, that concession this year as well. Again, we do hope that we'll be able to add these in the future, but that was a position other than the teachers, paras, lead teachers, that are not indicated here that we felt that we could again leverage to support our students. And finally, we see, or not finally, but at the Webster School, again, this is a slightly different, um, organizational chart because it is just the one, one data coach. But that is a school that actually does not have an assistant principal, which is how it is different from our other schools. It is a K to five, so that is where we don't have, um, an assistant principal and, and we are keeping that for this upcoming year. Um, I do know that there has been requests for that school to have an assistant principal in, in the future and that is something we could consider. But again, for this year, we're, we're kind of scaling down and, and not up or enhancing in the way that we had originally thought we might be able to. And then finally, for our Adams School and our Webster Extension, they are led by our head teachers and each of them has an administrative assistant, a point-five guidance counselor that's shared amongst them both. Um, there are no changes to this model. There are no, you know, assistant lead teachers. Um, there's no data coaches. These are all schools that are primarily focused on, you know, having the paraprofessionals and the, the teachers, interventionists. So there are a lot of staff that are directly supporting our students. Alright, um, and then finally, the Devens, um, has our principal and our administrative assistant. Again, that school will not undergo any changes as well. For next year, again, we had originally hoped that we could enhance some of those services and add support, uh, for next year. But again, we have those plans all ready to go, uh, when the time and, and budget allows. So what is more to come is, um, a deeper dive. I want you to know that this is a preliminary presentation as there is still much uncertainty around our budget. So I am committed to providing more information as it becomes available. I think what's probably going to happen is we're going to be doing more often check-ins, um, even though we have potentially less information, again, because we want to make sure that as we're getting information, our community is also getting information and we do admit that right now, we don't, we don't have a, a, a ton. So we are committed to providing that when it becomes available. I anticipate that we can provide a more comprehensive and deeper dive into the budget. Once staff, staffing, um, and including the staff that are guaranteed a position has been finalized. So now currently, what we're doing this week is we have the list of open positions that are available. Um, and our staff that do have rights to those positions will be able to choose. We do understand that they may not, um, choose one of those positions. They may even, um, choose to apply for a different position that is available because as you saw, there are some, there is a little bit of restructuring and some new positions that are available. So, you know, we do believe that some of our staff that would have, um, rights to a position in the teaching unit may instead choose to, um, apply for something else. So once we have those, you know, better solidified because there's a lot of moving parts, um, we're hopeful that, you know, we'll be able to be able to provide those updates, if the need arises for additional reductions. Um, but we're hopeful that our existing reductions would eliminate the need to make any further changes, especially once school begins. Finally, we are operating on a 1/12 budget. But once budgets for next year are released, we will again make sure to provide another presentation on the entire budget for your review and consideration. You know, again, I know that it's, it's not a ton of information, um, that we can provide and there, we are going to be presenting additional budget decreases for tiers two and three that I hope we do not get to. Um, but we will be providing that information as we receive it. So thank you so much for your time and I welcome any questions that any of you may have.
Parker? Um, good evening, Madam Superintendent. Just a comment for everybody, uh, that's listening, um, for us is that, um, March 1st, we're looking at the Student Opportunity Act and I think if my memory serves me well, we're looking at about a $7 million increase. Uh, today, we're looking at a $5 million decrease. So just a matter of four months, we've made a $12 million swing, a million dollars a month. And, and that's kind of, you know, was, somewhat summarizes the position that we're in today. So with that, to the Superintendent, um, grants. Obviously, you know, um, I would think, what, what is your philosophy on grants? I mean, I, I, I just never had a sense or a feel for what the overall philosophy was for the district in the past. Was there a central go-to person? I know that we've had a lot of teachers, a lot of administrators that have went out on their own and got grants, were pretty successful. But, you know, what is your strategy? Especially with grants will be very competitive. And I, you know, the new chart does have a budget grant coordinator, so if you can delve deeper into, uh, what that person's role will be.
Yes, so, um, so that's, that's a great question. Um, so you know, there's two portions to the grants. There are the ones that we, um, get it so you can see me really. Um, there are the ones that we apply for, um, and that budget and grants director will have a huge part in making sure that we apply for any additional grants that Desi may offer. Uh, you know, every year, Desi comes out with many grants and then other institutions and organizations come out with grants. And they kind of come out pretty, pretty often, you have to keep a sort of your finger on the pulse of those and be able to turn around those applications pretty quickly. Again, that grant money is often created to serve a need that has just emerged. So we do, um, so for example, like immigration grants that have come up in the past in order to support our immigrant families. So we do imagine and we've already seen that there are going to be some grants that are coming up in order to support us during these times. Um, so that grants director will be applying for those grants. However, there's also the state and federal grants. As far as my, um, philosophy around those, you know, generally those grants are used to provide, um, to fund our supplemental services. So extra services that we are providing above and beyond what we are core, what our core services are during the day. Now generally, we are able to use those funds to pro- five professional learning, tutoring to students, extra help. Sometimes it's used for personnel, uh, to push into classrooms or to be after school. However, we use it, we also use it for materials that may be supplemental and not part of the core curriculum. So there's several different areas that you can use, um, the grant funding. However, currently what we're going to be doing, especially in tough budget times, um, the grants are a good place to put our person. So our parent liaisons, um, you know, I, obviously parent engagement, we believe to be a core service. However, it, it technically can be, um, funded under a supplementary service. So by putting our family liaisons and creating 15 family liaisons, um, under our grant funding, we do believe that to be a more protected funding source. We need, when we know that our general funds are going to be reduced. Now again, our, of course, when our, when the budget in the entire country and revenues are, you know, are reducing or decreasing over time, that definitely doesn't impact our state and federal grants as well. However, again, not to the same extent that it would to our general funds. So in the past, I've definitely leveraged those funds during tough budget times in order to make sure we're preserving some of the staff that we need and some of the, you know, the direct services that we need. So that does mean that those grant funds, like we're pretty much expending them on personnel. Um, so where we did have materials, where we did have PD, where we did have a lot of things that we still need, we're, we're instead, um, focusing the majority of that money on personnel.
Mr. Chairman, you're on mute.
I, I'm muted. Ms. Cardello, now she's on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the Superintendent through you, Mr. Chairman. On the page where you had the comparison chart, it didn't list the districts. Do you mind sharing those districts or would you prefer not to?
So the reason I didn't include the districts is because I know right now as a, you know, as a superintendent in a very tough position, making very tough decisions, that I didn't really want to put those out for everyone to see. Again, every district is in its own unique situation and has had to make decisions accordingly. And I wouldn't, you know, fault any superintendent for making, um, these tough decisions because I know how hard they've been over the last few weeks. So, so basically because of just my own, um, sympathy for my own, you know, situation and what it, what it's been like to go through this, I really don't, uh, you know, I, I would prefer not to divulge those. Those have been, um, released in other areas. But again, you know, this is a tough spot for all of us, for companies, for organizations. Everybody's dealing with these same kind of cuts and, um, and you know, I, I not only sympathize with the people who are being laid off, you know, because they are contributor, contributors to our organizations, but also with those who are having to, to make those tough decisions and having to deliver those layoff notices because that is not, um, where we want to be and that's not where we were, you know, just a matter of three months ago.
They're, they're almost easy to figure out just by the amounts of students that they have, so we, we can, but thank you. I thought there might be. And one other thing, would you mind sharing that chart with us? Could you send that to us electronically?
Yes, so the whole presentation will be shared.
Perfectly, thank you, thank you.
Ms. Murray?
Um, I had two questions. One is directly related to what Mr. Parker was talking about and the second one was to address, um, some emails I've gotten from some constituents that I think I already know the answer to, but I think it'd be good for you to vocalize it here publicly. Um, so in terms of the question that relates to what Frank was asking, would it be possible to consider part of the grants, um, director's job to be, to run some professional development for teachers on how to run, write their own grants? Because that might be something we need to look into next year.
Absolutely, I think that's a great idea.
And, um, secondly, um, there's a rumor going around that all of the paras in the district have been cut. And so I've had a few people, a few parents with special ed students, et cetera, contacting me, asking me if this is in fact true or if it's just a rumor.
So that, that would be a rumor. However, we have cut a significant number of paraprofessionals. So it is 23 in all. Four of those paraprofessionals have, are, um, being eliminated because there are people who are in positions that are also being currently eliminated that have seniority and are able to bump into those positions. So that accounts for four of those 23. The other 18 are, um, or sorry, 19, no, that's right, 18, 18, sorry. Are, I'm sorry, I'm getting all flustered. So yes, there 19 are, um, are actually paraprofessionals that are not providing direct services to students. Now this is an interesting sort of conundrum that we are in as a district because we do have, um, paraprofessionals that are in, in, in the same bargaining unit, some providing direct services to students and some not. So we, long story short, we do believe or hope that even though the chips fell the way they did as far as how we had to eliminate based on seniority, that we are hoping that those, um, that many of our, our current, uh, paraprofessionals, even those existing who did not receive layoff notices may be more interested in, um, another position in our district. For example, the family liaison position. And if they are, we are hoping to, uh, recall, um, at least 15 of, of those paraprofessionals.
Thank you for the clarity on that.
Chairman.
Barrows?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Superintendent, I, I talk in a weekly basis with legislators, not only our, our own delegation, but because of my full-time job, I'm always in contact with legislators and, uh, there is not a single one who tells me, who, who gives me some hope of, um, you know, money in the state budget for the new fiscal year. I think the public knows and it's always important to, uh, remind them that, uh, these, these cuts that, that you're making, it's not based on nothing, it's based on, on money, we don't have it, uh, right? So it's like a budget crisis that the state's going through right now. So, my question is, is Desi, uh, the Department of Elementary, Secondary Education, the commissioner and, and his, his team, are they telling districts that, that there is a possibility of even greater, uh, cuts or budget reduction even more than what we were told to do it now?
Yes, so these initial reductions that we made were based on the, the, the internal dates that we have, um, with our collective bargaining units, um, of June 15th and June 30th, to make sure that we are letting people know ahead of time so that they have time to, you know, um, to search for other employment. So these are really just our initial cuts. Unfortunately, we have been told that we should be planning for a 10% and potentially a 15% cut as well. So these are just the 5% cuts, unfortunately. So yes, I do worry, I'll, I'll be honest, it is a very nerve-wracking situation to be in. It is a very nerve-wracking situation to be in when we know we have, you know, 7,500, um, students in Everett that we want to make sure getting the best possible service and instruction that they can, that there could be greater cuts to what we've already made. Um, and then we'll be having to make even tougher decisions about what those could potentially look like. When we present scenario B and C, so this is scenario A, the 5% cut. When we present scenario B and C in the coming weeks, it will be in the form of options that we'll be providing for here is potentially what we would, here are some options for what we would need to cut to get to 10% in the case that that occurred. Here are options for what we would need to cut in order to get to 15%. We would really need community feedback on that because that is going to mean significant cuts to programming. What we have maintained at this point is all of our programs. We've maintained our athletics, our art, our music. We've obtained, maintained all of our different subject areas and, you know, not just like our, um, all of our science, all of our APs. Those are all perfectly intact at this point. However, there is, there are scenarios in which we had to get 10 or 15% reduction where yes, we are going to be having to make programmatic sacrifices. And those are ones that are going to need community input and that's where we're really prioritizing what is important. Those will also, of course, come with personnel cuts as well. When you cut a program, you're cutting the personnel that's within it. Um, I'm really hoping that we do not get to that space. You know, another thing that we need families to do, that we need teachers to do, that we need everybody to do is to call, you know, their state senators, call their legislators, you know, and be advocating for more funding. Um, at the end of this meeting, I will, we will be sharing, um, a resolution that we would like to sign that a lot of school committees have also signed. Again, to make sure that we are being provided any money for any of the COVID-related expenses because the other thing that we have accounted for here for the 5%, but that we do know is a reality, is that we are going to have additional expenses on COVID in order to create the social distance that we need to create, in order to put in the security measures and the safety measures that we need to put into place in order for a student to be safe in the fall. It is going to cost money. And we do know that there is money in the CARES Act and that there will be, you know, funding sources that emerge over time. Um, but it's really important that we're pushing hard for those so that, you know, we are, we are present, we are given the funds that we needed for those specific, um, scenarios so that we are not having to cut additional in order to, to make sure that we have masks and, you know, other, other, um, you know, partitions, plexiglass, all of the different things that we are going to need come fall, um, are going to cost money.
Thank you. Ms. Murray.
Um, regarding the mandates from the state coming out about fall, it's my understanding that they came out with initial mandates and then sort of walked them back and said, no, 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 these are just summer mandates. Don't freak out. And that, so right now, the mandate of 10 students to one live teacher is a summer mandate, not a fall mandate. And that's how several of the other mandates have been walked back. Is this, is my understanding about this correct?
Yes. And while we've gotten preliminary information, um, we've been told that the governor will be putting out the information later on this week. And again, like all of the preliminary information we get, you know, we don't want to share it because, you know, it's not, because we know that it changes. It changes from the, the moment we get it to the moment it gets released. Um, so we also don't want to give out premature information that may not even be true. But yes, we do know that the regulations for the fall will indeed be different from the regulations for this summer. By how much, we're not completely sure. We have an idea. Um, but again, what they're doing right now is they're working with, you know, the Department of Public Health, making sure that we have all of the information that we need in order to make really informed decisions. Um, they're looking at, you know, how, how the disease is carried, how it is, um, you know, what are the percentage chances of, you know, children between these ages being a carrier for it? What are the percentage chances of them, um, contracting it? They're also coming up with plans for what do we do? What, what is the scenario in which, and we were dealing with this when we first closed, of, you know, students go on a field trip and it's found that somebody had it. What is the case when one student has it or when a family member has it? So we need safety measures in place too and plans in place, um, for those really real scenarios when, you know, we find out that a member of our school community, which will happen, has COVID and has tested positive. So what does that mean as far as the safety precautions that need to be taken in that case? So with in the classrooms, um, will it need to be that that classroom closes and it gets relocated? So they're putting together quite a bit of information in order to better inform us for the fall so that we can make the budgetary decisions that we need to make.
With that being said, can you speak a little bit about our plans in Everett for summer school? And, um, what we're doing live versus what we're doing remote and if we can use anything we're doing live to sort of, um, litmus test what might, the fall might look like?
So yes, so we are doing remote learning only for this summer for, for now. Um, except for the emergency care center that is at the Parlin right now that's being run by, um, FKO. Um, other than that, we are, all of our other summer programming is remote. That includes our extended school year. That includes our other enrichment programs. Those will all be remote. Um, the reason for that is because we need to outfit our schools. So we are going to be walking the schools, surveying the spaces, making classrooms where there currently aren't classrooms, turning, you know, potentially gymnasiums into classrooms, thinking about, you know, trailers. I know all these things sound completely daunting and it is because, because they are, you know, these are the real scenarios that we're looking at for the fall. And so we want our buildings to be, um, available for us to do that surveying and for us to do any building or changing that we need, need to do as well. The other thing is we wanted to, again, be realistic about the fact that, you know, the spread has not stopped. You know, i- it is slowing and that is wonderful news, but we definitely don't want to be in a situation where come fall, we can't come back for core programming because there were, you know, because we had students back in schools too early. So I think, you know, if, if it had been okay to go back to school, then we would have gone back already. So for us to go back next week, I don't think is, is the right move. Again, if we are wanting to protect our students and our families, which we do. So that being said, though, we will have a reopening committee that is starting, that will be meeting weekly. That reopening committee is going to be planning for fall, but they're also going to be assessing every week the current situation and determining if there is a time later on in the summer when we decide we should come back for a bit. We will bring back ESY or an enrichment program, um, for, you know, a week in our new school environment to see, to see how it works. I think that's absolutely a possibility that we could almost pilot what next year is going to look like at the end of summer programming if we are prepared to do so and if we feel it's safe to do so.
Uh, Ms. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, through you to Madam Superintendent. And, and just to clarify, the summer is just ESY. It's not enrichment, right?
Yes, but we are actually providing some enrichment services. There are enrichment programs actually that we do provide and we'll be providing some of the same ones, but some different ones too. Um, there's, you know, a project read that we're providing for English learners. So there will be some different programs that we are trying to provide for our students.
Okay. I just want to delineate versus what we typically have in the summer, which is like you sign up and it's a four-week enrichment and structured.
Yes, that. We will actually have those too, where we are going to reaching out and, you know, they're, again, they're going to look different. They're not going to look the same, but we are trying as much as possible. And there are some grants we've actually applied for in order to try and get some of that programming off the ground. And then we'd be reaching out to families or the community to say, here's a program that's available. Um, you know, we're working on a program. It's called Project Read for our, our newcomer students right now. Um, so we're hoping that will get off the ground. So we do plan that there should be other opportunities, just like there would be, um, any other summer. They just may look different this year.
Um, and my question was, is there anything we can do right now to invest for the fall? So either we're using the parent information center to get updated contact information because our families move a lot or, you know, may change phones. So I've heard a lot of, you know, they are no longer being contacted and then come to find out it was the phone number and we had the wrong number. So there's been some of that. So, um, I didn't know if maybe we could ask a little now to make sure that we have the updated contact information so that when we do community outreach or when we do family engagement, the family liaisons reach out, that we're connecting in a way.
Yes, I think absolutely we can do that. And I think that that's, you know, we started to put together a full database of like updated contact information as we were, you know, um, school to school as we were, um, dealing with the current situation because it also had to do with students maybe relocating because of a instance of COVID. And they're feeling there were many different issues where we had a different phone number, different address, different place to deliver a Chromebook. So we started to, you know, put together that information, but again, it changes and it will change again in the fall. Um, so having a way that we really streamline that and make sure it's, uh, you know, kind of live and always, um, reflected in X2 is definitely something we should be doing this summer.
Uh, because one piece of feedback as well was that we don't, we don't utilize email a lot, family engagement and that you don't have to worry if somebody's not on Facebook or their phone number. Look into some of that and building an email database. I know parents will tend to read that and can translate it easier as well.
That's right. Yeah, absolutely. We can definitely do that.
Barbara. Sorry.
I'll, I'll yield to, uh, Ms. Sunny who hasn't spoken yet, that I would like to recognize after.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sunny, go ahead.
Um, have we, um, spoke to the mayor at all to see about any buildings that we could utilize our land to put some, you know, students in for like trailers or buildings to put the students in for classrooms in September? If needed, and are we also going to be bringing back, um, paraprofessionals or any other, um, assistance that we might need in September as well?
Um, I have been, I actually spoke to the mayor today about this and let him know what we're going to be doing as far as surveying the schools and some of the, you know, initial, um, information we've gotten about the regulations for the fall and what that could look like. Um, so, and, and even before we had gotten any news, he has been very open and about using city buildings. So that is definitely going to be an ongoing conversation and they will be part of that reopening committee as well. Um, so that they're fully in the know and able to contribute on, uh, you know, where our, our students should be. And then the second part of your question, I'm sorry, it was, sorry.
Um, if we're going to be bringing back in September, any of the paraprofessionals or any other one that we, any one else that we laid off to help assist in September?
I, I would hope that we would be able to, yes, if we're going to, which I do believe we'll be able to bring back, you know, I, my guess would be, you know, about 40% of all those laid off if we, you know, if they so, so chose to, to come back. And so absolutely, but we actually would hope to be able to make that decision well before the fall rather than waiting till right before the school year. Again, we know that we're not sure what the budget is, but again, as people are applying for jobs and, you know, we're kind of getting more situated into who is in what position and positions are made available, we'll be immediately, uh, recalling our paras and any other, um, staff that may have been laid off because they were not tenured or they did not have seniority.
Thank you.
Mr. Parker.
Uh, thank you. Um, you know, I think it's important, I think, you know, my colleagues would agree that, um, you know, uh, the wrong message, misinformation, uh, misstatements, uh, is going to bring a lot of fear, doubt and uncertainty, uh, amongst our population. And we're starting to see it, such as the point about the paras that, uh, Mrs. Murray brought up. I think part of the misconception with the paras is that, you know, Friday was the last day of school. Therefore, per their contract, they don't get paid during the summer. So that's a true statement, correct?
That is true. And actually, we're currently in bargaining right now. And I know that annualized pay is, is something we have already agreed to because we do believe it's just best practice, um, not only for our staff, but also just for our overall bookkeeping systems to be consistent for all of our staff.
So therefore not getting paid during the summer periods is actually a contracted item and shouldn't be, uh, so much misconstrued as that all the paras got laid off.
Correct.
So I want to clear that. Also, um, a couple of people reached out to me, not a lot. But during public comment, uh, at our last meeting, the city leader alluded to or, or, or implied that we are losing our, our 110 funding. Um, I don't know where that information came from, but if you, if you could, you know, elaborate on our, our standing with the, yeah. It is the 110 Foundation, right?
The 18?
The 18. I'm sorry. I, I want to say 810, but I know that's the restaurant on North Street. Okay, the 18 Foundation.
Um, so I'm meeting with them tomorrow. Hopefully not. You know, I know that in a, you know, in, in times like this, it's very hard for our outside partners, you know, in the same way that it is for us because we're, we're making organizational changes and they've made investments in certain personnel and training. And, you know, um, however, that's sort of the case across the board, you know, the, the, the staff that we are laying off are ones that we have made investments in over the years. We've, you know, trained them. We've built a relationship with them and the same with us. So, you know, I know that they're feeling that right now. Um, we will still have academy deans. I think some of the nervousness was that we may not be moving forward with the academy model. We definitely are. Um, however, we're going to go back to a dean model. Um, the dean was slightly different. It was a teacher leader. There would be, you know, responsibilities, um, you know, around student discipline or really what we're thinking about it is more, um, you know, restorative justice. But, you know, for everybody's overall understanding, like student discipline, student behavior, but they would also be leading our common planning times. Um, and also they wouldn't necessarily be overseeing evaluations in the way the academy principals were. So there are some trade-offs we've had to make, which means that then our, our, uh, principal and vice principal have to do more evaluation. So like I said, we're having to sort of scale back, move around. People take on greater responsibility, um, in order to make our budget work. So I think that was some of the fear, but we are definitely dedicated to continuing with the academy model. So they will be academy deans and they will be academy specific versus in the past, my understanding was they were based on grade, um, or grade level. So a dean for every grade level. So instead we'll have five for all of the academies. Did I, I don't know. So, so anyway, so I'm meeting with the 18 Foundation tomorrow. Um, hopefully that's not the case that they are going to be, uh, pulling funding. Um, so we'll, we'll have that, um, decision tomorrow. But I do want to just make sure that they understand, like all of our partners, I know that we're not, you know, we're not going to be able to fulfill some of the commitments we've made to our partners and our vendors over the year, um, in the same way that we have in the past. And I feel like this, again, it's not, I don't want our partners or our vendors to feel slighted in any way, you know, this is, this is, um, throughout the organization, we're feeling this too in the same way that they are.
Okay. And, um, we're still committed to CTE, but, um, my assumption is that, uh, we had talked about expanding, uh, three more shops, HVAC, electric plumbing, um, that's on hold?
Yes, we are adding some teachers where we did find need. So for example, um, where we already have pathways or academies or CTEs that we would be including additional teachers where we knew there was a need. So for example, program and, programming and web development, um, another health assisting teacher, but as far as starting new pathways, uh, yes, we're going to have to hold off on that until the future.
Okay. And my last question, um, since our last meeting, um, our regular meeting, uh, we had a, a surplus as far as, uh, the overall budget, um, was. What is the strategy been used to, to use that surplus to kind of, um, offset any type of, um, needs or additional funding after next school year? Uh, with six days to go, um, you know, how are we using that, that, that surplus, um, to our advantage?
We are buying Chromebooks. We are buying PPE equipment. We are, um, there is also with the 2680 regulation that was just passed. We can prepay some of our vendors that we have relationships with. So we are trying to land our budget in a way that, you know, supports us for next year. So things that we would have to spend money on next year, um, where we have some funds, um, we are, we are trying to, um, utilize those funds now.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just to piggyback on what Frank, Mr. Parker had said, um, some of the PPE, if I understand, is reimbursable? So we can seek reimbursement from Mima or FEMA. Um, is there a timeline on that and is that kind of the strategy there? I don't know about Chromebooks, but.
Actually, there was a really, um, great idea. I'll actually let Mr. Obremsky, uh, share, um, our strategy for, um, how we are going to be funding our PPE equipment.
Can you hear me okay? Does everyone hear me?
Yes.
Back to you for that. Um, the city has received a grant for $4.1 million for some of their COVID expenses. So, um, approximately maybe a month or so ago, maybe three weeks ago, uh, Mr. Bond and I and Jane Gigolo got together, put together an expense report that we had, uh, so far and what we anticipated expended all the way through December 31st, this grant would go. We did send that information to Mr. Demus, the Chief Financial Officer for the city. We did send that information to Mr. Demus, the chief financial officer for the city. And he has sent that in, that's not a FEMA, there also is a FEMA program too. But the issue becomes with the FEMA money, when the FEMA reimbursed the city, it goes to the general fund. We would have to request the money back out. But we do have another grant that's come, a COVID expense grant directly to the school system based on your Title I funding. In the amount of $1,562,000. That I just had to turn some information into the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on Friday. They give you a figure per student, how many masks you should order, how many, how much sanitizer. And so forth and so on, but my recommendation, and we had a conversation to the last few days and late last week with the superintendent, the deputy superintendent and Mr. Shaw. To use a lot of that money towards, because when you look at the grant, you could use it towards technology. And some other things, to use a lot of that towards technology, more Chromebooks, updating some more hotspots and things like that. To use some of our own budget towards P P E, especially the masks and the hand sanitizer, because if we ever close school. We may not need as much, you don't know what's going to happen. Once, I mean, hopefully school will be fine in the fall and everyone will be in school like it was prior to the COVID, but we're just not sure at this point. Because the school committee, if we didn't use a line item, the school committee would have the authority to transfer that to another line item, you know, based on superintendent's recommendation. Sometimes when you write a grant, you really got to stay with the guidelines of what you put in the grant. So the superintendent, the deputy, myself, Mr. Shaw, I've been working on that the last few days, hope that answers your question.
No, that's helpful, is that, the Title I, is that the S R?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, and that one can continue into the next fiscal year if needed?
We decided not to use, because we were pretty good fiscally this year in fiscal 20, we decided to put all the money towards fiscal 21.
Thank you.
Mr. Parker.
Mr. Bremsey, just as a suggestion, we got in Mrs. Lambert's point on the FEMA. Reimbursement that would go to the general fund, I would suggest that. We be allowed to hold on to our many, the K B reimbursement for fiscal year 21. Therefore, when the reimbursements from FEMA come into general fund, we don't ask them for it. So we get, this way we get, you know, the money upfront. And, you know, it's, you know, it's also one of those. Strategies that was outlined in the school finance task report, you know, doing the budget upfront as opposed to come to selfless appropriations later on. So, you know, you and the superintendent can have a conversation with city hall. I think it warrants some conversation, thank you.
I will ask Mr. Demus that question for you, thank you.
From the chair, from me, I haven't spoke yet, but. Madam Superintendent, I want to congratulate you, I've been on the school committee now for 20 years off and on, matter of fact, more than 20. Years off and on, it's the first time I've ever seen an organizational chart. In terms of the original chart that you showed, just my own curiosity, did you, was that presented to you or? Did you have to figure out exactly what the organizational chart was for the Everett Public Schools?
So I actually asked for one as part of my transition, so they were kind enough to supply me one.
Okay, and then, just again, in terms of, I guess, the, the big word is today is transparency. When you made up your chart. Again, your first time being a superintendent, did you base it on anything, did it come from anything to do with your experience in Boston or? How exactly did you go about putting together your organizational chart?
So yes, I, I did actually look at several different organizations, not just Boston's because I was intimately familiar with that one, but also, you know. Districts that are of similar size, again, I don't want to ever transpose the knowledge I get from Boston, because I know that that's a very different district and I. Want to make sure that I'm, I'm kind of comparing apples to apples. So we actually had several different org, you know, org charts that we were looking at when we were making these determinations. And again, one of the hardest things to do when you're doing this is really thinking about. Positions and really separating them from people, you know, I think we're all human. And, and we want to make sure that we can preserve all of our staff as much as possible. But one of the key things when you're doing an org chart is to try to keep, you know, people out of your mind and think, okay. If I'm starting a organization from scratch, what does it look like in order to make sure we're meeting the needs of the organization? And, and so that can be, and it's something I did in my previous department as well. So that certainly informed it, informed our process also, so we went through, you know, several different iterations of it. But the other thing that I, I kind of like with org charts just myself, as, you know, we had gone through several in V P S. Also, over the years, the ones that I felt like were easiest for me were the ones that were like really streamlined, where it was very clear that it was like. Here's the reporting structure, very clear what one led to another, you know, the ones that look kind of like spider webs. That's actually not to say that that's not a bad thing, you know, I think that those are useful as well. But just, I guess, for the way my mind works, it's, it's much easier to have one that's like very streamlined in line, so my old organizational chart was like. Five lines like this that have five different departments with five different department heads. Again, just to try and make it very clear for everybody, because the other thing is that we know that nobody's looking at the org chart during the day. They just know who they report to and who that person reports to, so again, as, as easy as we can make that. And who, who they're meeting with, like as easy as we can make that, the better.
No, excellent, I mean, I mean, that was exactly my thought because. I got presented where I worked with our organizational chart about a year ago and. Spiderweb would be a, that, that wouldn't quite describe what was handed to me. It looked like that document that we had during contract negotiations with the 87 different colors and things like that, so. Again, I just, I just want to congratulate you because I believe, you know, during this time. Between you beginning your job. COVID hitting, trying to put together graduation, I mean, it, it seems difficult to believe that you were able to put this together. You know, and again, it, I was, I was extremely impressed with the simplification of it and I think. That really, really is what's important is that people do know who their direct supervisors are and, and. I was very impressed with it, thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Parker?
Yeah, in closing, Madam Superintendent, back in December, you presented yourself as an unafraid teacher. I'd like to say that in a very short amount of time, you proved yourself to be an unafraid administrator. And it's being noticed in the community, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Okay. Madam Superintendent, you said you were going to mention something for people to contact at the 19.
So I was hoping that Lauren, and we will mail this out as well, even though it's really simple and streamlined, so we figured we could share it on the screen for the public to see. Is a resolution, and again, very topical because we're talking about budgets. And it is specifically for making sure that we are, that any, the COVID related expenses and shortfalls are being funded and that we, you know. We're going to be supported in that way as a school organization, so Lauren, do you mind sharing your screen and sharing the resolution?
Do a thing, I'll pull it up.
Thank you.
If I could add, Councilman DePiero has this on the city council agenda for tonight, and he's asking his colleagues to support us on this also.
Wonderful, so yes, that's very helpful, we definitely need everybody supporting this as much as possible. So again, it's, it's very, very simple and it really just comes down to the fact that there should be no unfunded mandates for COVID-19. That's like the bottom bold faced, you know, remark is that we must ensure statewide school reopening that is safe, responsible and equitable. And that is fully funded. And then if you scroll down, you're able to see all of the other. School committees that have already signed on to this resolution. I think actually there have been a couple more since the 17th, but, so yes, we would like to join. Along all of these other school committees and making sure that we're stating that we like them, want to ensure that our, our schools are. Are being protected and that our student services are as well.
Good.
That we make a motion to support the resolution?
Second.
Roll call vote please.
Ms. Cardelo?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Applezay?
Yes. Seven affirmative, the motion passes.
Move for adjournment, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, roll call vote please.
Ms. Cardelo?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Applezay?
Yes, seven affirm, seven affirm of the motion passes, everybody stay safe and. Madam Superintendent, thank you for the presentation and, hey.
Good night.
Keep your fingers crossed, take care, everybody.
Good night.
Bye.